Welcome. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Traverse area District Library for April seventeenth to order. Start by standing, follow me, and I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? I would like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
I just like to offer a couple amendments to the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. So, under the consent calendar, D1, we're gonna remove that. Just talking with staff and our attorney, we wanna work on that policy for a different, something different than what it is right now. And then, under old business, I'd like to add C, minutes from the closed session from last meeting. And then, D, just a quick notification about the June board meeting.
What was C?
The minutes from the closed session. They are in your folders, take together, so basically you should read them, and then vote, and then we'll shred them after that. We keep a copy, but those copies will be discarded.
And D? And D?
Oh, D was just a discussion about the June board meeting.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? I would like to make that motion. Discussion?
Oh, I'll second that.
Find the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none? The agenda has passed. Susan?
Paul, this is Susan. Can I ask Michelle a quick question?
Certainly. I'm sorry, I...
That's okay, Paul. It's all good. It's all good. Michelle, since I can't read the document about the closed session, how should we handle that for me?
Yeah, so I think for that, Paul, you could just abstain since you don't have it.
Okay.
We have enough people here to approve the minutes, and we'll give it to you next time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's any who'd like to make public comment, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone who would like to make comments? Okay, you can do it for four if you really want. Okay, since no one wants to make any public comments, we'll now move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything any would like to take off the consent agenda? I thought we already did that.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to take off, but it's the community library under reports, member reports, since Vicky's here?
Okay. Take off what?
The F member, library communications, PCL, because Becky, Vicky's here.
Okay. With the modification taking F off, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Oh, you beat me.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Consent agenda has passed. Okay, items removed from the consent agenda. Can we have the... Did you want to make statement now? Thank you.
I'm Vicky Shirley. I'm the director of the community library. It's been a while, and I just wanted to come and thank you for all you do for us. You have my written reports. I'm not gonna go through that. We recently, yes. I'm out. We recently installed a camera system, a security system, and Scott, it wouldn't have happened without Scott Morrie and his team. Bill helped us, the staff, and I with some other security issues, some Bitwarden and Arctic Wolf, and things that test the staff, their knowledge on internet safety, and those are things that we wouldn't have without you. So, I just wanna thank you. You are great partners in this library world. Thanks.
Thank you. We have a question for you. I have a question for you. I noticed in your report that you got the panic button fixed. Where does that go? Who is that alert?
It was brand new. It was a part of the security system when they installed the cameras. All the staff has access to it, and I'm not gonna tell you where it is.
Well, I don't wanna know where the button is, but if you're alerting someone, who are you alerting?
It goes, it goes right to the sheriff's department through the TKAS. Yes. We were told, we kinda override it, but they're so bored on Peninsula, we were told that they would come out anyway. But all the staff know how to override it.
Can I quote you on that?
Yeah. It's actually portable, so the staff can move it around or carry it with them. If there's a program, they can take it into the community room, stick it on a belt. We chose to go that way over something portable because we're a smaller staff and things are happening all over.
All right. Do you know if any other members or branches have something like that?
Scott helped interlock and put in cameras, and I know Fife Lake has cameras.
Well, I know cameras.
Oh, but I don't know about the security. Scott's here, so I'm gonna thank him today for all his help with QuickBooks. It's been invaluable. When it needs updates, it won't let me do anything. You know, when he sees my name sometimes on his phone, he's like, "Oh, no, not again," but he's wonderful, so thank you. Anything else?
That was all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Move on to, was there another item?
Nope, that was it.
Okay. Director's report.
So, you have my report in your packet, and just wanted to update you. There's just a flurry of lawsuits regarding IMLS funding. The Attorney General, Dana Nessel, has signed onto a lawsuit, and I think that hearing is next week on Tuesday, I think. And so, there's, there's just this ton of stuff to keep track of. The Library of Michigan is gonna do a statewide update to all the directors next Thursday at 2:00 PM. So, hopefully, we'll know more then, but there's just, publishers are suing. There's like all a bunch of stuff happening, so we'll know more.
Do we, do we have any outstanding grants?
We do not.
Not directly with?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Old business.
Oh, sorry, Paul.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just had a couple questions for Michelle. Michelle, in your report, you mentioned about you and Danielle, the recruiting module. Can you say more about that?
Oh, PayCorps is our new recruiting module, and it's a really neat system. It'll make it so that we can onboard people. They can apply, onboard, do all the paperwork, everything, all through the system. And then, once we hire them, they will be imported into our payroll system, and we just did our first payroll. The other day, it went really great, and I just have to say thank you to Danielle and Christie. They worked really hard to get this implemented, and then, I should've said this too, but this week was our audit. It went really well. And so, Danielle went from like PayCorps implementation to audit, and thanks to, thanks to their work, it went through the audit very well. So, yeah, it's a really nice system.
The audit is complete?
It is complete.
Wow, that was, seems fast.
Yeah, so they'll be at the June Finance and Facilities Committee meeting. So, if anybody wants to attend that, we could notice it as a public meeting. If, otherwise, we'll, it'll just be at the committee meeting.
Okay.
And Michelle, that's wonderful. Hopefully, that'll help us with our employee recruitment. Let's get it out to the public why it's a good idea for them to come to our yard sale. Can you give them a little teaser on a big bargain they might get?
Well, we're still putting it together, but there's definitely gonna be some office furniture that we don't use anymore, some tech equipment. I don't know. It's, it's a whole mishmashes stuff, and we'll know more next week. We'll be meeting next Tuesday. So, we'll put something up on our Facebook and our webpage, so people know what they can come find.
Thank you.
Did you want to just report out on the year-end review? I see it's in the old business here.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, Heather and I, just pulling that up, Heather, or getting to the... Yeah, Heather and I always do it in your review, and we realized we didn't finish the 2023, so that's in your packet. They're on our website. It's, it's something we do for the public. We usually wait to do it until after our audit. So, we, so we, but, so you'll see on the 24, it says the numbers are unaudited. But you'll see just in the year review, kinda, it's kind of a nice snapshot about some of the fun stuff, and, and it's funny, when we put together 2024, it was like, who no wonder we were tired. We did so many fun things that are listed on that. Like, we justified it by winter, spring, summer, and fall, especially the TBL award that we got, which was the highlight of the year. The mileage passing, that was really the highlight. That was even more important than that. There's also a union negotiation in there, and we had our first, like, federal election, because we started doing elections here. And we had our in-service, so aside from all the amazing stuff in our, in our year-end review, it's, there's even more stuff, but it was a great year, so. Unless people had questions about anything in there?
It's really well done.
Thanks.
Looks really nice, and you guys did a nice job on it.
Yeah, Heather is a magician or whatever. She has great skills at this stuff, and we try to use the same numbers every year so that people look from year to year. You can see, like, how many reference questions do we have? How many people? How many cardholders? How many items circulated? And they're pretty impressive numbers.
So, one thing I like to do, we did it, I beg your pardon. So, when we did our Vital Records annual reports, we always did the first baby of the year, you know, and the most common name and stuff like that.
But that's fine.
Is there any kind of, like, you know, highlighting any of the most circulated items? I didn't catch it in there if I didn't.
No, we usually don't put it in there, but we could. We, sometimes we'll do that, like, just through social media in January.
First library calendar year.
Yeah. Yeah, it's good.
I noticed that you have the purposeful partnerships. It's quite an extensive list of groups that you have to interact with. And I imagine Michelle has a lot to do with that. I'll throw one in there. If it isn't one that just didn't show on the list, and it's the children's museum, just because we share a significant number of customer base.
I'll put that on there.
Yeah, they're a great partner for the library.
Any other?
This is Susan. I just wondered if we have hard copies of that in the library for anybody that wants to pick one up?
No, we usually don't print them. We just, you know, someone could come in and print it. You know, we wouldn't charge them, but we typically don't leave them around.
You have it on our website?
Yeah, it's on the website. Oh, and Betsy, now that I'm looking at Betsy, Betsy, ma'am. This is the 2003. There's a picture in here. Oh, yeah, it's in the 2003 year-end review. There's a photo at the bottom in the corner, because we had our 25th anniversary. You all remember that. And there's a photo in the bottom corner. I don't know if you can see who it is, but Betsy said they did a fun trivia with staff here to see who, see if anyone knew who all those people were. Vicky, did you get them all? You didn't see it?
Are you talking about the crowd shot?
Yeah, there's a, in the bottom right corner. It's the time from when the building, I think when the building was open.
I see.
I don't think it was the opening. It was just at some point in time.
Yeah, I think it was just later.
Yeah, it was just, maybe it was just later, but far left is Mike McGuire, but other than that, most of us don't know, but Vicky, you know everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can give you the names if you need them.
Betsy knew who they all were, so we had a fun little trivia with the picture on our annual report of the smiling faces that have greeted people here, so.
And do you have any more comments about the completion summary?
The what was it?
The 2000, the strategic plan.
Oh, yeah. No, it was, I, I just was trying to think of, like, what did I learn? Okay, I, I thought it was really fun, and it kept us on task, and you saw it in all of our board reports with our strategic plan. So, this year, we're just working on internal communication and external communication, and so it was really fun to put it all together. So, you'll see the plan and then how it was all laid out, and then the last pages was our measurement plan. And some things, it was really interesting to look at it once you're all done. Some things like increasing meeting room use, like that increase we were hoping for 5%, it was way more than that. I found the, I got the numbers. So, we started off at like 1,100 meeting room events in year 2022, and by '24, we had almost 2,000 meetings. So, some things like that, you saw, like, we're just getting tons of use. But then, if you look at library cardholders, it looks like the numbers went down. And so, it's kind of a funny metric, so it's really interesting to look at this, and when I've talked to Heather about it before, it's kind of like we have more intense use of our space. You know, we might have less cardholders. It's kind of static. It's like around 59,000 to 61. But those people are really using us and coming in and meeting and checking out, and so it's really interesting. There's a few things that we didn't keep track of as well, and I think that's my big lesson from this process, is don't put something on the measurement plan unless you know you track it, or make sure you track it. So, so that'll be really helpful for the next time. I think overall, it was really great. The few things on the implementation plan that we didn't do was just entrances to the department, which we didn't have money for, and furniture, more flexible furniture. They're highlighted in pink on your survey, but everything else, we, we did. And that's, so this is just like our checkbox, and then you have the lists of everything.
Susan, question?
Thank you, Paul. Michelle, I'm wondering, the front page of the paper talks about this tremendous increase in taxable value for Grand Traverse County. Did you get called by the media or any reaction to that where it fits with the library?
No, nothing. I didn't, I didn't read the paper yet today, but I haven't seen it. But we, whenever there's an increase in taxable value, that, you know, is reflected in our revenue. And that'll show next year.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Just, can I just make one comment, Paul?
Yeah.
Just to put on the record, you know, that it is true. We understand that it's an impressive document with impressive facts and a list of things, whatnot, but never miss the point that it's the, it's human beings.
Yeah.
This represents the work of a lot of people who do a lot of work all the time, and they're very good at it, and we're grateful for it. Good report.
Yeah, thank you. It's kind of nice to wrap that up.
Good things to report.
Okay, we can move on to new business. This is the...
Oh, we had C, closed session minutes.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I don't see. Finance, C is... Ah, yes. Do you want to explain the, it's the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting. You want, you wanted to take, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
You wanted to take something off the agenda?
No, that's already off. We're good there. It's just, we need to, approval of the closed session minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the closed session minutes.
Discussion?
Is appropriate for me to vote, being that was not in the closed session?
Oh, yeah, you might want to abstain and say much to Susan.
Okay. All those in favor, do we need a roll call for this?
Not necessarily, but we can.
We can. Let's just do that.
Yes. Um, starting with Boyteen?
Yes.
And Ginnens abstaining from this vote, and Deo?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
And Vickery?
Yes.
That's four aye.
Oh, do you want to do, Susan?
And she was abstaining.
Yeah.
Yeah, Vicky, I'm abstaining.
Okay, perfect.
That's four. Yeah, okay. Anything else missing here? Before we... D, June board meeting. Ah, yes, thank you. Want to explain?
Sure. So, the June board meeting is on the day, Juneteenth, and we had talked a lot about closing that day. So, it is in Fife Lake that day. But, so just so you know, we are partnering with NMC, and thanks to Melissa, and, and a lot of these partnerships are due to Melissa and all of our staff. But we're partnering with E3 and NMC, so they're doing an event that on the day from 5:00 to 8:00, and so we'll be partnered with them. So, I didn't know if it mattered to any of you, so I figured we'd just, you know, let you guys know that, that that's where the meeting is. It would still give you time to get back to town if you wanted to go to the event.
As long as we get back before 8:00, yeah. Do we have any other alternatives, rescheduling?
We could always go here. I mean, Joe, I know Joe, Joe loves this meeting because it's the shortest drive for him. We always hold this meeting room open.
It's a great meeting. It's a great meeting. Can't, can't miss that meeting, but...
Yeah, it's beautiful weather.
As long as everyone feels, yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna, Michelle, say how much I appreciate that thoughtfulness and, you know, sort of absorbing the conversation about Juneteenth when we had it a few months ago, and then raising it today to highlight, and, and also that there's programming around it that, that you're able to let the public know about today. So, I feel confident continuing the meeting in Fife Lake, and, and I just wanna acknowledge your responsiveness and thoughtfulness in handling it.
You're welcome.
So, we don't really need to do anything other than to acknowledge we'll be at Fife Lake and rushing back? Because I would like to see those events. Okay.
We'll keep the agenda light. If we can.
Now, any public comment?
Oh, we gotta do the union letter under new business.
Oh, sorry. So, do you want to explain what's going on?
Yeah. So, with the implementation of PayCorps, we realized it doesn't work very well to do four payments. So, people who don't take our insurance get four payments a year. It's like payment in lieu of insurance. A lot of places do it. It's easier if we just do it monthly, so we talked to the union. They agreed, and Kim Wiggins is here. And Kim is a union representative, so it's just like a formality to say we're gonna change it from, from quarterly to monthly, which is kind of nice for everybody.
Can I get a motion to approve the modification of the payouts in lieu of insurance from?
Quarterly.
Quarterly?
To monthly.
To monthly.
So moved.
Oh, I got you that time, Susan.
Second.
Can I ask a quick question?
Discussion, yeah.
Just to see if, Kim, you had anything you wanted to say about this? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we need a roll call on this? There's money involved. No? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you, and thanks to the union for being so easy to work with on this.
Okay, we did get through it.
Yes.
And now, public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment? If so, please approach the podium. Looks like we don't have a big line. Sounds good. Trustee comments? Yes, please.
Yeah, I have an article I think I'd like to forward to the, to the, my fellow members here. I was speaking with someone at Eastern Michigan recently, and they had a partnership. The Ypsilanti District Library and the School of Social Work had developed a partnership to put a full-time social worker into their library system, which I thought was a very novel idea to get people who are going through a crisis or going through some difficulties sort of hooked into community services and into those networks and things. I don't know where to go with it. I don't know if we have a partner like a major university in town, but I thought it was a very interesting idea, and I'd love to share it with everybody, and just maybe we could talk about it at a future meeting.
Did you bring any documents back to kind of describe the program?
So, the young lady who was, who was heading up the program, it was her dissertation work, and they're gonna be implementing her proposal. So, there's a long scholarly article and a pretty decent abstract, which I think would be interesting to, to most of us because of the, you know, we've talked a lot about having security and having a security guard in front. That makes sense, of course, but having that other piece to it, I thought was a really novel approach, and I'd like to keep an eye on that program and see how it's doing, and see if it would dovetail into anything we might want to work on in the future.
Do you know if the library system pays for the social worker or something?
They have a, they have a grant right now, and the university is providing some support as well.
That's interesting. You know, there's a reference to that in the MLA news and notes, so I'll see if I can find that and send it to you.
Yeah, that was a really novel and interesting way of approaching, you know, some of the challenges of our time, so.
Yeah, we did have probably right before the pandemic and during the pandemic, a social worker through Traverse City Health Clinic. It was just once a week, and then they had some staffing shortages, so it probably went on a couple of years, and then it ended, so. But I think people appreciated it, so that would be great. I'd like to read that.
I'll send that along.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to thank the children's library staff who were so helpful in helping us find and identify books with pictures of Sleeping Bear Dunes. There are a lot that can't be checked out in the room upstairs because they're hu, you know, they're in the big, huge anthologies, but there are some really great books in the children's library as well. So, we had some good help trying to figure out how to get as many picture books as we could. And as a result, a group of young kids in the area has written letters and drawn pictures in support of Sleeping Bear Dunes and protecting our national parks. So, thank you for the library and the librarians for playing such an important role in that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're here. Anyone else? This is just a comment for trustees.
Paul?
Yeah. Yes, Susan, please.
Thank you. I don't know how many folks this week saw the article in the ticker, I believe it was this week, about food shortages and what's happening. There's over 1,000 people every day that are involved in trying to address the food shortages in our area. I would just encourage folks to take another look at that. There's a lot of information, and I'm trying to brainstorm with Taylor from Goodwill, the Fresh Food Partnership, some other ways that we can approach this, some creative ideas, especially with funding cuts, and there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of variables. And Michelle, I just wondered if you had an update on what we'll be doing with food this summer?
No, we won't find out till next Tuesday. Andy will be going to a webinar about it, so we'll know next Tuesday. But we were brainstorming at a staff meeting about just like, what can we do for our community when times are tough? And we came up with a whole list of problem, or a whole list of solutions, not problems, and one of them was that maybe we could be a collection site for food that could be distributed to a food pantry. So, it doesn't really have to do with our kids, but then we are also looking at creating a program that's like Read for Good that some other libraries have implemented, and just looking at maybe trying to find a donor, so when kids read, so much money goes into food, whether that would be food here at the library, maybe it'd be like supplementing if we do the Feeding America with Fresh Food. So, we're working on those ideas. There's some other ideas. Linda's probably gonna do, she does a prom dress swap, because prom dresses are really expensive, and she's got a bunch upstairs. We'll be doing a prom dress swap, and we're looking at some other ideas, so this was something we just talked about as a staff, so.
There are some references on the Community Resource Page, too, that can help direct people towards places where food may be available, like Northwest Food Coalition.
Paul, this is Susan. I thought of something else I wanted to ask.
Please, go ahead.
Hopefully, I won't forget it here. Oh, I'll come back.
Okay. I'll make a couple of comments if I can about the IMLS, the Institute for Museum and Library Services, which was basically closed, and it just has a skeleton crew there now. And many of the grants that are sent across the United States, in fact, are really important for Michigan for the Melcat, which is their interlibrary loan system. But there are many other things which are referenced if you go... But there are many other things which are referenced, if you go, I believe it's on, on the website. Heather's done a good job of pulling together all the things that are at risk of being lost because of the IMLS funding, like assist, people who need, who need visual impaired services. So many things that we've come to depend on and people in the community have come to depend on. So there are a lot of resources being applied to it now. But a couple of things I would mention to people in the audience and that huge number of people at home is contact your representative. Contact them multiple times, contact them daily, contact them weekly, call. You can reach the Office of Congressman Bergman at 202-224-3121. It's the Raven Office Building. It's, the squeaky hinge gets the grease. We have to make sure that people realize how important that is to the community. I've asked for a meeting with Congressman Bergman with hopes that Michelle and I could meet with him. He is on a CODEL, a congressional delegation, for the next two weeks, so he won't be around. And so far, I haven't had a contact with anybody else in his office, but I think we should continue to try that. I also would suggest that you contact the members of the school board, because school, students are dependent, depend on the library for many things, including help with testing, many things that they need. And if the school board is also pressing our representatives to re, refund the Institute for Museum and Library Services, I think that would help. So I just wanted to get that out there. That's all I have to say. Let's see, where are we at?
Paul, I remembered what I was going to say.
Good.
Thank you. I just want to let the board and the public know that the nominations for the Human Rights Commission Humanitarian of the Year are open right now. They close on May 2nd, and there's an opportunity, the form is online at the HRC website through the city. It's a very easy form, so there's a nomination for an individual, and then there's a nomination for a smaller business, under 30 employees, and then a larger business. And I think it's just another really good collaboration partnership the library can make with the HRC to put in our nominations. So, thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Susan. Yes. I just wanted to add to the trustee comments a couple of things that I wrote down earlier. I wanted to ask a question about the Policy Committee's notes, Policy Proposal 1 dot 12, confidentiality policy. I think that was stimulated from our last meeting. And what are we looking to find out, whether it's okay to put the requester's name in the document?
That was one of the, yeah, that was a, a main topic, so I did talk to our attorney, and we'll, we can flush it out at the next Policy Committee meeting. But it's also just like, we have confidentiality in a lot of different spots in our policies, so this just puts it in one spot, one location, so.
I wanted to say that reviewing the, the document this month, I came away with a feeling of it was a great month of programming. Everything that was on there, you know, sounded really interesting, and I hope that the public liked it. And I know that I enjoyed learning about it, so just want to say that I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think I understood what the payroll recruiting module is. That's just the ability to take the applicant's information and get it into the employee files. And I wanted to ask, I think Susan stole my question, what's going to be in the May yard sale? Any good items?
I don't, of course, they're all great items. We'll have a list up on our website soon. I'll make sure we email it to you.
Okay, thanks. And I think that was the end of it. Okay. If there are no other comments, then can I have a, a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Support. Discussion? I hate to, yeah, but. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Let's hold that call. I was trying to get it out.
Well done.